... and please remain standing afterward. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a purpose and justice for all. I'd like for a moment of silence, please, for two things tonight. First of all, for our first responders and the troops deployed. And second, for Kaylee Saylor, Cory Saylor's daughter, who was struck by a car is in intensive care right now. Thank you. I also want to mention before I forget that there is a GoFundMe Facebook for Officer Saylor's family on... You can find it if you search on Facebook. If you can't find it, if you PM me, I can get it to you. Okay, Chief Woods?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. I do have... Oh, no, you keep coming. I do have to announce, though, that Erica Ririk is with us tonight on The Voice. John, why don't you stand over here? That way your back's not to the cap.
Okay. It's better.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Fire Service, the Fire Department, we ran seventeen calls into the borough for the month of May. We had forty-seven calls overall with zero dollars fire loss. I guess our fire prevention program is working. Our response time, we're averaging two minutes and twenty-four seconds from the time that we get a call to the time that we're on the scene in the borough, which is phenomenal. And this has nothing to do with me. This is our younger guys that are sleeping at the firehouse and making sure the fire press gets out on the street. So there's six individuals that are making sure that these things are hitting the road fairly fast. So I'm very proud of them. Training's been another highlight. Our guys have taken a hundred and fifty hours of training for the month of May. And they're doing a great job. Our personnel, time spent on the fire calls, has been eighty-three hours. And that's basically by really ten guys, eleven guys, that are doing this. The last thing I have. I reported last month that at the beginning of May, we had a save of a six-month-old baby that was in full arrest when we got there. It wasn't in the borough, it was in railroad. This little one, we did CPR on it from the time we got to the house till the time that we got to the hospital. Attributed to our paramedics, we had some very fine paramedics that work at this station. And they were nice enough to let me ride along in the back of the ambulance and for moral support, I don't know. But anyway, the crews down here do a very good job, very passionate in their job. One of the things that was unique on this call was two off-duty paramedics heard the call come out. They live in Shrewsbury, and they went right to the scene. And there was four of us in the back of the ambulance working on this little one. The little one's made a full recovery. They're actually doing a story about her in a medical journal because I can't believe that she was down so long. And she had no damage, no brain damage, nothing at the end of this, so very good. We'll be doing some sort of award for our paramedics later in the year.
That's great.
Yeah, it's awesome. That's all I have. Hope you all have a great evening. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Any questions? Have a comment?
All right. Do you want to get the blood going now?
Hey. I am here with Sharon Boyle to read our resignation letters so that there is a recording of them for the New Freedom Public after the failure of both the video and audio backup recording during the April meeting when they were originally read. Sharon did participate in the event, and I was unable to be here as I was out of town. At the April meeting, the question arose as to whether disbanding the seated Recreation Commission without cause and replacing them at will was legal or ethical. The solicitor was not sure, which is concerning. I also believe that these seats should have been presented to the public to see if there was interest within the New Freedom community. A motion was made during the May meeting to have these resignations incorporated in the minutes, and I thank the three of you who voted to have them added. I am really confused and disappointed that four of you did not grant this motion. The reason was that we did not make ourselves available. We are here today to read our resignations and respectfully request that a motion we made to incorporate these resignations into tonight's minutes. I am writing this resignation after much thought and sadness, but it appears that the borough wants to give the Recreation Commission lots of responsibility with little authority, essentially micromanaging the Recreation Commission. Being on the commission is no longer enjoyable. The interaction with the Borough Manager and several members of the Borough Council is antagonistic rather than collaborative, and major issues are dictated to us rather than discussed. The recent phone call that I received on Thursday, this would have been April 4th, from President Andy Bobby telling me that you were keeping me on but letting Rich Garvey and Sharon Boyle go, was the straw it took for me to say no. The addition of two new members and the fact that there was never an indication that the current commission would be disbanded left me in disbelief. The fact that Ryan Ross, who is the Borough Liaison Director, would be giving voting rights when he is a member of the council that makes the final decisions, is counterintuitive. I was told that the reason Rich was asked to lead the council was that he made derogatory comments about the Cesklis Intenial Committee, a committee that should have been part of REC and run through REC. Sharon Boyle is being dismissed because she verbally had questions about the role of Shrewsbury Township with the newly formed commission because they did not have any sitting REC members, and it looked like they were going to struggle to get residence for these positions. This should have led to an adult conversation with all involved. It does appear that these decisions were made based on a couple of people's opinions and questions and not the quality of Rich and Sharon's contribution. I have been on the Recreation Commission for fourteen years. I have thoroughly enjoyed my commitment to New Freedom and my seven years as the New Freedom Recreation Commission president. However, the borough's involvement and manipulation over the last few years have made it too difficult to tolerate. I am proud of what we have done for the community, the tennis program, pickleball program, parade, concerts in the park, and the Veterans Day dinner. I look forward to seeing new programs put into place and hope that they are all successful. I also hope that programs that Rich, Sharon, and I have run successfully and profitably for years continue to benefit the citizens of New Freedom. I wish the new members of the New Freedom Recreation Commission well. Thank you. Again, my name is Sharon Boyle. I've been a volunteer on the New Freedom Recreation Commission for a while. I've been serving, I guess, for about two years or so. At the March Borough Council meeting, myself and my co-volunteer, Mary Ann Michaels, had our resignation letters read by other people. Both of us knew that we would not be able to be there, but we felt it was important enough to have somebody read for us. I was actually out of town, but I did listen in on the call for over an hour and a half, so I heard a lot of the comments, so I'm fully aware of what was said and the opinions given. In April, like most others, we discovered that due to an unfortunate equipment failure, neither audio nor video was available beyond three point, I think, one-six minutes. The official minutes of the March meeting only contained brief moments and mentions of all the comments discussed pertaining to REC. You know, obviously, there's no way of taking every single word that is said, which is why it's important to have official documentation. In the spirit of the Sunshine Laws and transparency, I feel it's vital to have as much documentation as possible available for every citizen to watch, to listen to, to question. Therefore, as long as it's confirmed that the equipment is still working, I'm going to reread my letter. And I said, "Last Thursday, April the 4th, 2024, I received notification that Andy Bobby had chosen to dismiss my colleague, Rich Garvey, from New Freedom's REC Commission. This decision occurred without a discussion by the full Board of Council members and without an official vote through motion or approval. I am no longer comfortable serving on the REC Commission under the leadership of Andy Bobby as Borough Council President. I believe he conducted himself in an unprofessional manner, putting what appears to be a personal agenda before established protocol and proper conduct rules of government official. I have concerns of the legality of his behavior and the questions if he is still an appropriate choice to continue as Council President. Therefore, I am resigning my position on the REC Commission effective immediately. Additionally, I have no interest in carrying over and volunteering my time to the new REC Director, which, per my understanding, has been already been chosen by Andy Bobby, once again without the full discussion or vote of his fellow Borough Council members. I was also informed that a specific responsibility or title was pre-discussed and decided upon pertaining to how I can best serve the new REC Director and the communities of New Freedom in Shrewsbury Township. I was quite disappointed and highly offended that people feel they have the privilege of deciding and dictating what I'll be doing to meet their agenda without any thought to a conversation with me. There is a vast difference in willingly choosing to volunteer versus discovering your personal time, talents, and services have been promised to another person without your consent. I wanted no part of that. He especially appeared to be... I'm sorry. I urge this solicitor and any other concerned citizens to please review the action of Andy Bobby. He especially appeared to be making a habit of creating such a hostile environment that the end result is a mass exodus. He may recall his behavior at a prior birthday party. Now, I did say celebrating himself. It turned out it was his significant other, and I'll discuss that in a moment. A birthday party, he went to the VFW, and I said, caused the chef, the waitress, bartender to all quit on the same night. And I said, "He is now two-for-two in causing decent, hard-working people to resign because we won't abide by a personal agenda." And this is the same letter that the person who read mine had handed out. I did have a discussion after that with somebody who was there. I was not there that night that I talked about, and I have heard three different versions of that. So whether that part is accurate or not, causing those people to leave, I do know that there were other events that evening that happened, going behind the bar, serving and handling alcohol bottles, which...
Excuse me, this is not a VFW meeting.
Oh, I know that, but that is...
You've read your letter of resignation, including those things, which at the last meeting I pointed out, a lot of them were fictitious. So let's just...
I am going to finish with my five minutes, sir.
You don't have five minutes. You have three, but that's not...
I was saying I was taking back that one section, that there was some other things. And just like I may have had something inaccurate at the bottom of mine, you, sir, had a lot of inaccurate things to say with me hearing fully for an hour and a half at that meeting. One of the reasons that I was told that I was being dismissed is because I was asking too many questions and not being a hundred percent supportive of this new REC Commission collaborative. Like, what you... Hang on.
But those words aren't even...
I'm still speaking, sir.
But those words are not correct. But go ahead.
You, I heard you. You said, "I didn't want her back on that committee. There is no way I would want her because she was a troublemaker." Now, had that been functioning, that is the word that you used. What you did not understand, or what some of the others did not know, is a lot of the questions that I was asking at our REC Commission meetings were not on my own. I had other people that I know, friends or even strangers, you know, at the... I was at the parade, not the parade, the New Freedom fireworks and that going on the carnival. And somebody is like, "Oh, are you part of that? Hey, aren't they doing this?" I had a number of people throughout the past year come to me, asking me as a volunteer on the commission, having to do with that collaborative. And that's why I was asking questions. Those questions were not only mine. They were other people, but whether they were mine solely or whether they were other people should have had zero impact in how I was treated when I asked those questions. Everybody in the community has a right to ask, to see, to hear, and to comment.
I agree.
And that was why I was asking so many questions. Yet I was treated incredibly rudely and disrespectfully. So the things that I said at the very bottom of my resignation letter, I know that you had an issue with. And if that was not correct, I apologize. But you, sir, I heard one hundred percent of what you said for an hour and a half at that meeting, and I do take exception to it. And you know that you're also not supposed to be interrupting people when they have the floor. Thank you very much.
I apologize for...
Excuse me?
Yes.
My name is Devin Taylor. I'd like to give this woman my five minutes of a lot of time in case you did not actually finish your letter of resignation.
Thank you. Actually, I...
I am directly here as an individual of the community. Some of you know me, some of you do not. I recently have excused myself as a regular member of the VFW for ongoing conflicts of interest perpetuated by members of this council. I have not made my resignation available.
Mr. Taylor, you are on the order, and I would like you to sit down. Thank you. Sharon, I will apologize for interrupting you. I guess I'm a little bit frustrated. I will say just one summary statement. I mean, last month I discussed in detail, but one summary statement. I tried to pick the best people that I possibly could for the new REC Commission. Not that you're not an excellent volunteer, you are. And I have told Mary Ann many, many times that I am so proud of her tennis program. I'm very proud of everything that you people do. I have no problem with that. But the people who were not selected for the new REC Commission publicly said they were not in favor of Shrewsbury Township joining us in the REC Commission and/or said they would not participate in that. Well, the whole purpose of the new REC Commission is to participate and to be able to get more grant money because we're teaming with another municipality. So I apologize if that offended you, but that was really... And that is my only agenda, is to hopefully it be a success.
At that point, I had not decided, you know, whether I personally wanted to be on it or not. I was enjoying what I was doing. I have volunteered. I have spent a lot of my life volunteering, whether Girls' Scouts Church, whatever. So volunteering is something that I do believe in. But the way it had been handled at every single one of our meetings, when we kept asking for updates and we're like, "I don't know, I don't know, I don't know." I would ask questions, "We'll have to get back to you." That just kept going. And the other last thing that I... One of the big things I did have a concern about is what made it happen that it was New Freedom Collaborative with Shrewsbury Township and not Glen Rock or not the other? Because I knew that Shrewsbury Township did not have a number of the facilities on par with what we have to try to bring. So if the whole part of having that collaborative was to find the township or somewhere closest enough to us that could bring as much as possible together, my first choice from reviewing it would not have been what was selected.
And I want to interject here. With all due respect, if you were hearing any of us... If you were hearing any of us, you know, saying we weren't going to participate, which I never use those words, ever. But if you heard that from any of us, then you had a responsibility to come to us and say, "Hey, I need all three of you on board," because you did have a great REC Commission. "I need all three of you on board, and if you're not going to be part of this and you're not going to participate, I'm going to have to replace you." You don't just all of a sudden out of the blue say, "And it should have gone to the public. It shouldn't be handpicked people that you chose to..." You know, everyone should be able to apply for this. But you should have come to us or me and said, "Look, I'm hearing this from two of your people, and, you know, they need to be on board or they're gone." But that never happened.
You did it behind...
It was like blindsided.
All right. I'm not going to...
I've said my piece.
Again, I don't want to continue the discussion, but if you want to talk offline, I'd be more than happy to. I feel... I mean, you were in the room whenever some of these things were said, Mary Ann, so you know...
But I didn't know that anyone was going to be dismissed. I really...
You didn't, but you knew their attitude regarding the new REC Commission, so...
Well, and I also know them, and I know that they would have helped wherever it needed to be helped. I know that for a fact. Nobody would have walked away. If I said, "Hey, I need help with this or that or whatever," they would have stepped up and helped. I would appreciate respectfully if a motion was made to have our resignations included in this month's meeting, though.
May I ask a question? I'm not sure, you know, I know with Sunshine Laws and everything else. Is it protocol to have a link or anything if somebody, you know, submits paperwork, has a document, stands up and reads and stuff so the community can access it? If things fail, I would think it would be prudent to say, "Oh, so-and-so spoke at our meeting, you know, reading the minutes, verbiage, rule, march, whatever," and say, "Here is the link to view what was read." Is that something that is done or not?
Minutes do not include things that people read.
Okay.
That's just a protocol.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, so I thought I'd ask.
As an example, the thing that I read last month is not in the minutes. It just says, "I talked about..." I had something to say about the thing that was said the month before. It doesn't specifically go through each individual item that I said.
It doesn't... I'm sorry to interrupt. It doesn't actually look like you guys put any public opinion in it.
Actually, sir, you're still online. When he recognizes you, you can speak.
Okay.
I'm happy to step down.
I'm sorry.
I think it's a learning experience for all of us, but yes, you very quickly judged me, and I was not happy.
I apologize for that. Anyone else? Approval of minutes of the regular meeting held May 13th.
I think I'm going to approve the minutes, including the letters that Mary Ann and Sharon just read this evening.
Hold on one second. Would you like them read at the end of the minutes of tonight's meeting? Or would you like them added?
Yes, you can do it tonight.
So Erica, I think the idea is to have them read at the end of the minutes for this meeting, not last month's meeting.
Well, they voted it down last month. I'm voting to approve the minutes from May with the letters as requested.
Again, point of order.
Is it a matter of its protocol or not? You can choose to put those letters with it, or you can choose not to.
Right, but the requests from the citizens were to have them added to tonight's meeting.
I can change that.
What's the proper thing to do?
It doesn't matter. I'm just asking you what you'd like, because I thought I heard you say you'd like them added.
I just want them added if Erica...
I thought if it was denied last month that...
May 13th meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't mean to do that.
Okay.
May I speak to Erica? Erica, Sharon, whatever you think is best for protocol, I'm fine with that. So whatever you suggest, I'm agreeable.
I'm sorry. I think the letters of resignation were read in April, correct?
They were read in April.
Oh, yeah, they were read in April.
They were read in April, so we can't go back and change, approve minutes from April. The minutes that are on the table right now are the minutes from May. So I need a motion to approve the minutes from May.
I'm unfamiliar, but can you do like an addendum to the minutes?
Public comment.
Why can't you file an addendum to the minutes?
It didn't happen at the May 13th meeting. It happened at the April meeting. We're making a motion to the May 13th.
Correct, but the May 13th minutes were only submitted and approved based on the grounds that these were submitted, but have been under conflict since.
The council was trying to get a motion to approve the May 13th minutes.
I'm just trying to find out, because you guys don't understand what he's saying.
Please stop. This is not public comment. Please stop.
All right.
Thank you. The request currently on the floor is to have a motion to approve the May 13th meeting minutes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Erica has that motion on the table. Yeah, it's with... To put the resignation letters on for that.
On this one.
Yeah. On the May 13th. But it didn't happen in May, so we can't do that.
Then I second.
Fine, so my motion was seconded, so it'll just die, right?
I've seconded it.
Yeah.
You guys seconded, yeah.
Yeah, I did not hear if you seconded it. So I will draw my motion to write it to this month, and we will take this up next month.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the May 13th minutes as written?
Okay, I'll take my second back then.
Okay.
I completely taken my motion back.
Okay, so I still need a motion to approve the May 13th minutes. Sorry? Can you ask it through this, and then we'll address?
No, no.
Trust me, I'll get you there.
No, no, it's fine. I'm just so confused. Go ahead.
That's a couple of us now.
Well, the resignations were read in April. We're not approving the April minutes or changing the April minutes. What we're trying to do right now is get the May 13th minutes approved. The May 13th minutes, the only thing in there is actually... Is actually my statement regarding the... So I mean, I guess if we're going to put the entirety of the resignation letters in, then I would want these minutes approved with my entire... If that's how the protocol's going to be from now on, but I will abstain from that, so...
The reason I asked for it, because if you look at these minutes right below that, it shows that I asked for these letters to be included then, and it was denied. So that's why if you're, you know, if you want to wait till next month to do this, you can do that, however you'd like to do it.
Well, we'd have to go back and change April minutes, so we can't... Can I jump in? How about we just... Does someone want to make a motion to have these resignation letters be put in the minutes for the June meeting?
Make a motion for that.
I'll second.
So now you have their motion to second to put the resignation letters as read on the minutes of tonight's meeting. In tonight's meeting.
I just need a vote on that.
Just in the...
Discussion. Sorry, yes. Call the question.
All in favor of calling the question?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, all in favor of including the two resignation letters in the June minutes, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion here. So now we need a motion on the May minutes.
Make a motion for the meeting minutes of May 13th as presented?
Second.
I request that you change your motion to include the statement that I read last month verbatim, which addresses the two letters of resignation.
You see, you wanted a motion for that.
Well, I don't have a motion that includes it. I just have a motion to approve the May 13th minutes as read.
Include one, we should include both for all three. Then I'll amend my motion to include the statement as read. And do you still have a copy of that?
Yes.
And then as presented from Andy.
I'll second again.
Discussion? Yeah, I'm confused. I thought we already approved May's. No, we didn't. We didn't. Erica said the second on the floor. He's asking if they're made now. That's where we're at. Any changes or discussion on the motion and the second? All in favor of approving the May 13th minutes and by adding the statement read on April 8th, 2024, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. All right. April, I'm sorry, May 2024, Treasurers Report, Approval Pending Audit.
Second. Second.
First and second. Questions or discussion?
Warren, if I could find it real quick.
You want me to go first?
Yes.
I have a question pertaining to some of the memo items. We put in here that something is... Shoot. There's really not an explanation of what it is.
These are expenses you're talking about there?
Yeah, these are expenses. No, I'm in revenues. I haven't highlighted. In the memo field, can we get a little bit more information as to what these, some of these things are? You have one specific example? If you found yours, go ahead, and I'll go back to it.
The one that I had, page five? Um, the one that I had, page five. Second to the bottom. Seems like everything else either had a name or, you know, when, um, something like that.
Oh, the R 228.
22, yeah, 8:30. Uh, there's nothing after that. I was just wondering.
Just looks like the name was admitted on that one.
That's what I thought.
Okay, I found an example. If you go to page 13 on General Fund Expenses, Special Events. Is there a way that we can put what special event that expense is going to be going toward? Because I don't know who Start Safety and KCBS Marketing is. Under Special Events, is there a way, like above that? Contracted Services IT, you have sewer. Could we put Special Events dash what it is?
We could. That would require breaking out additional special events, which is, we can do that.
Absolutely. I mean, I think that the more information...
But that's not the memo line, that's the account line.
Yes, you're right. I apologize.
No, it's okay. I just wanted to make sure we were on the same page on that.
And I have one more question. This has to do with the way this generally is broken down. I see we have like electric or telephone or different things. How do you decide how much you're going to put for water, for sewer, for the general fund, for, how does that break down?
Yeah, utilities are specific to the building or the piece of equipment, whether it's a well or generator or anything that's being served or a building. So those would be separated by account into the respective funds. If you're looking at a general office expense, we'll say...
You're going to break them down and use...
Yeah, so we'll say like the copier lease. That's broken down to general water and sewer.
Okay.
It's split into...
You just split it a third?
Yeah.
I thought, I wanted to be sure.
General expense like that, it's split into threes. If it's specific to a, a use or a building's use, then it gets...
That makes sense. I thought that's what it was, but I wanted...
Same with Highway A, A Street, electric, and only street vehicles electric.
And here's another example, page 14. Keller Brown S O T R, and it says Special Events for $638.
No, that's the special event policy for smoke on the ground. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. See, that's, like I said, kind of dash insurance would be nice to...
Yeah, I mean, we can create sub accounts within...
No, well, make it complicated. It's just nice to know.
Yeah, and I can, uh, work with Tara and we can expand on memo lines a little bit more. Limited space, obviously, there.
I know.
But we can look at providing a little bit clearer than that.
Yeah, maybe if you take out those margins or something, it may help puddle them. You know what you're doing when you're doing those things. So it would just be nice to clarify a little more. Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question. I turned in a couple of questions. One in particular, page 13. Steve Foxman. This was back in October or November. It was a do not exceed 10,000. It's approaching 12,000. Did that come before council's additional funds?
The, you have made a...
So, yeah.
The addition, and I think there was $1,900. There, there was a problem. They had bid the, um, the fogging and the, uh, the treating with one technician. And when they got there, um, I don't want to say it costed, but they, they, um, the technician did not feel comfortable with the homeowners and wanted an additional technician there. It was between meetings and the cost that you see represents them having, having to have another technician at their request for cause.
And it's, that was, we were dealing with, uh, sales tax on the, on the invoice and other things on the invoice, which is why it extended. And then we just were not able to receive a final invoice, so why it extended out.
But that is the final.
And I apologize, I know you had submitted the questions that I haven't here. I just misplaced them. Do you want me to read over the other ones as well, Erica?
Um, if you'd like. It does, so, you know, council gives direction for a do not exceed. If I were to ask the question, this hasn't come up. How is council supposed to conduct business and make motions for the office to carry out if it's not carried out according to what council said?
I, I, I agree with you. I, I, it was not a great situation. We were trying to get it done. They were on site. They were ready to go. I mean, I could have called an emergency council meeting, but that would have delayed it another day. I was aware of it, so you can pin it on me if you like, but the, uh, but the, um, there wasn't any way to get them to proceed with the work unless there were going to be two people there.
Understandable, but again, you know about it. I'm a council member just like you are, and I never find out about these things because this should have been in my packet. There should have been something in this packet that said, the treating of One Eden Street went over by 1,900, here's why.
Well, I don't, I don't think we knew about it, what the final bill was going to be. We just knew that they were, had to add a person.
I just asked today. Today's the meeting.
Right, and that's, and yes, and that's why, yes, it came up today because we got the final bill.
It's, I knew before the packet was out. I'm just saying that there has to be some faith in what the council, um, motions, that it's going to be carried out as council directed.
And I agree with you 100%. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not arguing the point at all. It just was trying, we were trying to get something done and it did exceed the not, the not to exceed by $1,900.
And we have seven council members, not one. Not one or two, we have seven, and we've all deserved the same knowledge. Thank you.
If you have other questions, if you...
Erica, did you want me to read the other questions?
If, if you'd like.
I, I mean, you ask them, it's really up to you.
Yeah, go ahead, sure.
There was a question regarding, on page 13, regarding repair of the street sweeper. That was pretty much a lengthy equipment repair. There was an issue found with a short in a battery cable. There were battery cables that were replaced. There was some diagnostic, a lot of labor hours in the repair as well as the replacement of the batteries. So that's what merited that bill. That was $1,576.45 on page 13. Page 24, $784.20, which is shown as clean, clean service, and it's shown under BMO Financial, and that's the holder of the credit cards that we utilize. So that charge relates to bills from Cintas. Cintas provides all of the buildings with entry mats, rugs, cleaning chemicals, miscellaneous cleaning products, paper towels, toilet paper, hand sanitizer, hand soap, pretty much all of your maintenance items for that. So that's why it's shown under that heading. There was just some clarification requested on cleaning, and this would have been shown, I believe it's the la, last page, page 24, and that's regarding the cleaning service. So Swiss Cleaning, the check number 40522, which was issued on May 6th, covered 415, 418, 422, 425. The last line item, check number 40588, uh, which was issued on May 31st, should have in the memo line that it was actually two separate invoices, which covered 429, 52, 56, 59, 513, 516, 520, and 523, which is why it is not quite double the amount of the check issued on 56. So I did update QuickBooks to reflect those additional dates. They were just missed in the memo. And honestly, listing all those dates, it probably would have truncated it anyway in that line.
Yeah, we want them on the 281 for clean. That was a bit shocking. Thank you for clarifying that. I have one question about the street sweeper as well. I know that we do, um, loan that up to other boroughs. We do have one of our workers run it, but that is used, that's being sustained by that machine. That just costs us $1,500. I, I, boroughs have stated, they save thousands of dollars by having us, you know, come do it for them versus where they were doing it before. Are we able to look at, you know, a year-to-date, you know, generally, what is the maintenance and upkeep on that? And reassess what we are charging for the use of that street sweeper? It is very costly.
Do we not approve that every time we get a request, this council? We did, we used to.
The rate is set, um, I believe that's set in the miscellaneous fee schedule every year. I mean, as far as this, this was, uh, you know, pretty much a random occurrence. It's not something that's routine. It's not something that even routine maintenance would have caught unfortunately due to the location. So I, I understand your question, but I think maybe that's something that we can evaluate during budget time.
Please, yeah, have that as an issue, please.
Okay.
That's a good idea. How many other municipalities take advantage of that? Just Shrewsbury Borough?
I don't think you guys went anywhere else, did you?
No, we're in... Did you guys, did you go to Stewartstown? Okay, good. It's not that full, really. Think I think of Stewartstown, boy, that's... Any other questions? All in favor of accepting the Treasurers Report Pending Audit, please say aye.
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 Opposed? My vote is aye.
Do we have a vote going on?
I need to hear.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, unfinished business. Consider authorizing advertisement with ordinance replacing chapter 225 zoning article 8 sign regulations. There's a notice of advertisement in your packet. I would entertain a motion.
Second.
To do what? To advertise. Okay.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
My vote is aye. Stormwater channel on North Constitution.
No update.
No update, okay. Consider approval of the Third Amendment to ground lease with Peoples Bank. You've gone, and you've gotten a, um, comp from York.
Yeah, it's just something to compare to. And as I said in the meeting packet summary, you know, maybe it just provides a ceiling to kind of look at land that's similar in acreage, but definitely not similar in how marketable the piece of property is.
I've, um, I've tried to figure out by talking to several real estate agents what the, uh, the ground rent should be. Currently, it's, um, $6,000.
$520 a month?
Yeah, $6,872. That's an annual rent. I think it's my belief that it should be somewhere between 10 and 12. So I'll throw that out there as a discussion and, um, we'll go from there, I guess.
You think between 10 and 12?
I think between 10 and 12. That was a joke.
I mentioned it to a thousand per month.
Well, I didn't hear, I didn't hear that.
Erica suggested a thousand per month, which would be the 12,000 number. I would entertain a motion. See where we're at?
She, yeah, she, Erica, you got this in the form of a motion, correct?
Yeah, I said I made a motion.
Okay, second.
Can we hear public opinion before a motion's heard?
No. No.
Here, sir.
Is that a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion?
No. It's council decision.
You pointing at me?
No, it's public, public also. It's, it's, it should have been brought up before...
Well, I mean, I've had my hand raised back here for a while. Should I just approach every time I have a question or?
Just public comment at the end on the agenda?
He can comment on it before you take action. If you take action on a motion, he has the right to comment.
Right, I agree. Does anyone have...
You just told me I didn't, I couldn't comment until after the motion.
Hold on one second. Does anyone have any comments? Okay, you have to comment?
I'll come up to the table for this one. Hello, New Freedom Borough Council. My name is Devin Taylor. Directly commenting on...
Sir, could you turn the microphone on, please?
Hello.
You're good. Good, thank you.
Again, good evening. My name is Devin Taylor. I'm a member of the community president here in New Freedom, and I have direct concerns with us giving Peoples Bank favorable lease conditions prior to that the name on those doors changing in the next couple of months. Not full public knowledge that Peoples Bank, Corvus Valley Bank Corp. was recently purchased by Worksdown Financial Services for roughly $53 million or to exceed. I don't know if there is some incentive to expeditiously file this lease and get this resolved so that it can be incorporated in additional deals that some people may or may not be privileged to knowing about. All I know is that the bank manager today told me the name of the door is changing. It's not going to be Peoples. So why are we signing a lease on, with a, a property that's no longer, or a business that's no longer in valid operation as Peoples? This also brings up additional concerns about the security management assets that the Borough Council has continued to use through Peoples Security and its assets. I will continue to address what I know to be fact, and the fact is that Peoples Bank has been purchased by Worksdown Financial. Why are we trying to sign a lease with Peoples Bank and Corvus Valley Bank Corp. when they are no longer a legitimate entity?
Because they asked to rent it again. They want to continue the lease.
First of all, this is, this has been public knowledge for some time.
I disagree.
Yeah, what's that?
I disagree.
Well, it was publicly announced...
It's been known for months.
It's publicly announced...
As a privileged council member.
Please. It was publicly announced in newspapers, the Central Penn Business Journal, all those areas. This isn't a surprise, it's not true.
Council, council's known for...
Yeah, a couple of months.
I'm glad that you guys have all known. The issue is...
It was discussed then, council?
Issue is that we, the people, do not know.
It was announced publicly to everybody. It was in the newspaper.
The concern is, let me finish my, my, my tangent here. We're trying to sign a lease on property that has not been assessed since '04, '06 when the county wide assessment. Erica Ririch last month addressed how many assets we currently have. And after talking to your county tax assessor, we have roughly 20 to 30 properties that are either exempt, commercial, or other. I, as a member of New Freedom, request and ask the New Freedom Borough Council to motion that we... that we request a, a tax assessment for all of our properties as we look to consolidate and move assets to Wilmington and whoever else is managing them.
Okay, you're, you're way off the motion, so I thank you for your comment. I want to point out too, that this doesn't quite double the, what they're paying, but it's pretty close. It's sixty-eight, I lost the number again, sixty-eight seventy-two, and it's going to twelve thousand. I think that that is a fair number, more than a fair number for the citizens of New Freedom Borough. Obviously, and by the way, the lease is with Peoples' Bank. I don't think they're changing the name, as I recall. I think they're keeping the Peoples' Bank. And the new bank CEO is going to be running Peoples' Bank for the first part of the time, and then it's going to be a joint.
They are, they are changing the name.
Yeah.
They told me the other day.
They are changing the name, okay. But I think any lease would be binding on successors and assigned, so I don't think that's a problem.
Correct, David? Once they sign the lease, it's binding upon the new ownership?
Yeah, yeah.
Just so everybody knows.
I think the issue really here is when we look at property assessment and property value, it usually is assessed at the point of sale or tran, or transfer of ownership.
Actually, it's not.
I'm not saying that it has to be. It's about, it's about protecting our assets.
Sir.
That we are giving sweetheart deals to.
Pennsylvania does not reassess upon change of ownership. It's a constitutional right.
Correct. And I, as a member, you know, of New Freedom, I am requesting that our Borough Council give a, an assessment done for all of our properties, exempt at all regards.
We have an assessment of all the properties.
From oh-six, the county wide assessment.
Well, it was, it was.
I'll bring, I'll bring the file in for you guys, I can drop it off.
I understand how it works. There's also common level ratio that brings it up to.
I can, I mean, it, it, it's a matter of you versus the school board. The, the businesses in New Freedom are receiving favorable treatment while the residents are paying out the ass for water, for, for garbage collected that doesn't even get picked up.
I have a motion and a second for twelve thousand dollar lease, which would be a thousand dollars a month for Peoples' Bank toward Coors Valley Company, which would transfer to whomever the new owners would be.
I have a question.
Sure.
Are we able to do a one-year lease, eighteen-month lease during this transition time?
We can ask them.
We can ask them, but I mean, it's.
This way they're locked into five years then, right?
And then we don't have to, yeah, I mean, I think this is not a bad time. If you give them a one-year lease, then they, I'm not sure that it should be said in public, but if you give them a one-year lease, then they have the option of closing the branch and just saying, we don't need that branch anymore.
You give them a five-year lease and they close it, they're still going to have to pay for five years.
Right, but at least we would be covered for five years as, as, as a lease. So it would be, go ahead.
It was mentioned at the last meeting, it had been many, many years since it had been assessed, and I believe Devin brings on a good point, taking a look at our property and the last time they were assessed. So when these leases do come around, we're dealing with accurate numbers.
Do you want them assessed or appraised?
Yeah, there's a big difference.
I think you want them appraised because assessment, assessment doesn't.
That's not going to help. That's not going to do anything.
All that tells you is the current market value of that asset is at that exact moment. It's all appraisal shows you, and that's one person's opinion of that value.
And again, not, not to, not to beat a dead horse, but the motion is for this specific property, for this specific tenant, who is an ongoing, who is an ongoing tenant. I, I do agree that, that we may want to do something with all of the, all of the properties, but that would be something that we would talk about at a different time.
And if you're concerned about spending money, be ready to pay about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars to have all your properties appraised.
Really?
Because a commercial appraisal will, will cost you probably fifteen hundred to two thousand per property. That is the going rate in your county.
Okay, not overdone with that aside, on the, on the point of the ground lease for Peoples' Bank.
Just want to make sure, so we are still on the original motion of one thousand a month, twelve thousand?
Correct, twelve thousand. And that's not, I mean, this is just our offer back to them. I mean, they, they asked us for sixty-eight hundred dollars, where our offer back to them is going to be twelve thousand dollars.
And the sixty-eight is what they're paying currently, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Close.
Well, it'd be.
Five hundred and twenty, I think.
I think the second term is ten percent. The first, the first term was nine percent, the second term was ten percent, the third term in any success, succession, successful. What am I, am I to say?
Successive?
Yeah, I think we're eleven percent, right? But the, that was the original, so they're currently, I believe, at the ten percent. They've gone to eleven percent, which it's one percent, it's not, it's six hundred.
But this is significantly more. And this is five years, and we will not be, will we be increasing yearly, or this is set?
The lease is in.
I thought I did. It's not in this.
Correct.
Five?
It's, it's fixed for the five.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye.
And for the record, Mr. Taylor last week. December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, ABC twenty-seven, where's Town Bank and Peoples' Bank, bank, agreement?
What year was that?
Twenty twenty-three, December of twenty twenty-three, York Daily Record, December thirteenth. Peoples' Bank will merge with Coors Down Bank. So it was pretty public, pretty early.
It's been quite a few years. Okay. The next item on the agenda is handicap parking space request, which we voted on last month, and we voted to grant the request. Due to the fact that, that there, there could be some legal implications, I went back through and I read the federal and state handicap accessibility ordinances and laws. And I think, first of all, I think we should go ahead and grant this request. But basically, with the federal and the state laws, and, and Davey, please correct me if I'm wrong, but if there is onsite parking, there's no need to grant a, a on-street handicap parking space. If there is not onsite parking, then we still don't have to grant it. But there are legal implications where they could come back and file against us saying that, you know, that they, they should have some accessibility to their property, which is why I think we did the right thing, even though at the time my vote was no. So I, I think what I would like, and the reason I left this on the agenda is, I think we should have something that council has as either a resolution or, or something that says, if you have onsite parking, we're going to follow the law, and we're not going to grant a handicap accessible spot on the street. But if you do not have onsite parking, then we will consider it. Based on the evidence submitted, like they have a placard, their doctor says they need it, et cetera. That's what I would like to see.
But this isn't, this isn't dedicated to a specific, particular property owner. It's handicapped, and if you've got a handicap tag, tag, or something, you may park there whether you live with that residence or not.
And that's absolutely true also. By law, federal and state, if somebody comes up, like if I pull up and I, and I have a handicap, I can, I can park in front of his house. And when he comes home, my car's going to be sitting there, but hopefully I'll be done at Bonkey's quick enough that he'll be able to park.
Now, I didn't get a chance to say anything to Davey, but is it not, is it possible to make it just parking, handicap parking for that residence?
I already told you.
I know, which can't do.
You don't have solicitor behind your name. I just want to double check. I, I, not that I don't believe you, sometimes there's exceptions to everything. Because it was done before, and that means now we've done that for him, does that mean everybody in New Freedom is going to come to us and ask for a handicap spot if they have a placard?
They can, doesn't mean you have to give it. The law.
Where's the application?
Well, he's right, a lot of that's, that's probably still.
I'm afraid that's what's going to happen, and we're going to.
Well, that's always a fear. I mean, we're all getting older, we're an aging population. I mean, the people who live in, in town don't all have garages, they don't all have a place to park. So.
So what do we, overall, with regard to your suggestion about having a policy, the only problem is, is the, the standard for determining whether you acted correctly or not is whether or not your decision was oppressive or unreasonable. So if you have a policy that doesn't allow you to look at the facts on a case-by-case basis, the argument could be made that in certain circumstances where someone does have onsite parking, they might need a parking space, an on, an on-street handicap space. Because it could be that their mobility is, is hampered to the point where they can only walk a short distance to their front porch or to their front entrance versus, or if they have a, a rear garage, and they would have to walk three to four times as far. So now we've only concerned with adopting a policy that you live by as to whether to grant or not grant based on off-street parking, having off-street parking basically.
Okay.
But we're not, we're not deciding this again for the same time, are we?
No. It sounds like he was suggesting a, a polit, Andy was suggesting a policy as to how to make the determination in the future. I would recommend you hear it on a case-by-case basis to determine, because my concern is, I've seen doctors who give these placards out pretty easily. Someone has a twisted knee, or they had a, you know, and they don't turn them back in after they get better. Whatever the case may be, they have their parents' placard. So there are situations where it may not make sense to grant one based on the situation. But there may, there may be situations where it does make sense to grant a, a handicap parking space to someone who otherwise has parking on the lot, in the garage, wherever the case may be. So that would be my only concern about policies regarding this issue. I think you want to hear it on a case-by-case basis, that's, that's my thing.
That's a shame. It seems to me like it should be on a case-by-case, and you say resident handicap parking. Because.
You can't.
I know, but this gentleman needs it, and he's still not going to get it.
Right, but if you, if you make it specific, it affects liquid fuels too.
We voted last month.
They did a.
Oh, does it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We improved it last time. Yeah, so we're okay.
I just, for curiosity, how does that change liquid fuels?
Well, you can't, you can't assign onsite parking, it has to be available to the public.
Okay.
So even if you put a handicap spot in, as long as it's available to the public, it doesn't affect liquid fuels.
That's good information for all of us.
Now, the one thing you do, I, I talked to Andy today about this. You do have an ordinance that provides for handicap parking spaces. So we have to adopt the ordinance to create this park, we'd have to adopt the ordinance adding this to our code of ordinances so it is enforceable for the police department to ticket someone that doesn't have a placard to park.
What's the one you said we already have?
What's on Franklin Street?
Oh, that's, yeah, that was, yeah, that was for Frankie's.
Okay, right, so we have to add this one as well.
Right, I think part of that, we moved on all the other ones.
So we have to add, make an ordinance, advertise.
We have an ordinance, we just have, yeah, we have to add this to, as a enforceable handicap parking.
So I, I will go ahead and make the motion. I'm going to make a motion that we modify the ordinance to include the twenty-two East Franklin handicap parking space, and in the interim, we create the twenty-two East Franklin Street parking space so that he doesn't have to wait two months while we put through an ordinance.
Yeah, that's what I was concerned about, that would be too late.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
My vote is aye.
So that goes through as what, a, an ordinance? It changes.
Well, he'll change the ordinance.
The ordinance, and then, yeah.
Yeah.
You'll act on it next month.
Yeah, but we will make the parking spot.
How many nodes did we have, I'm sorry?
Two.
Two.
Okay. So we will make the parking spot as soon as possible. And it will be a standard parking space, not a, be inaccessible. Okay, new business. Consider accepting the low bid from Stewart and Tate Incorporated in the amount of one hundred ninety-four thousand seventy-three dollars and twenty-five cents for the base and alternate bid for the twenty twenty-four street projects. Have a need a motion?
So this is for just those two, the base and the alternate on, on street, right?
I'll, I'll second, and since we'll, we'll discuss, how, how does this fit into the budget, Andrew, one ninety-four?
Yeah, and that's, that was what I kind of noted there in the meeting packet summary, that what was budgeted for twenty twenty-four for street projects was one hundred thousand from Highway Eight liquid fuels. So obviously, this, even the base bid of one thirty-five, the low base bid of one thirty-five is over that for twenty twenty-four. So if you authorize both, you're looking at the one ninety-four. The Highway Eight fund is budgeted to have a available fund balance of one hundred twenty-five thousand at the end of twenty twenty-four. So authorizing the additional ninety-four thousand, we take that down to about twenty-five to thirty thousand at the end of twenty twenty-four. So you still have some money in there, just not as much to carry over to apply to future street projects.
And we did only have, excuse me, the two bids that are tabulated.
Yes.
That's it.
JBI and Stewart and Tate, right, we did not, usually we get one for Kinsley, we do not this time.
Is there any advantage or disadvantage to doing, you know, let's just say the base versus the alternate, as far as keeping them on the same schedule?
One instead of the other, or just leaving one?
Because one, I mean, neither section is great, you know, some, some of the work I've done last, last summer?
Correct.
So this, this kind of like doing it last year, and then these two this year, that kind of gets along the same schedule for future work?
Yeah, I mean, this is basically getting a lot of the base of the road up to, up to par so that it overlays that in, in the future. This has to be done in order, so we're trying to break it up a little bit in the budget years.
You mean last year versus the two this year?
Correct.
Okay.
Am I understanding correctly, you can choose to do just the alternate total of the fifty-eight thousand?
No, no, you would, you would have to, you can't just pull the alternate out by itself. You would have to do the, the base by itself and not the alternate, or the base and the alternate.
What happens if you do not do the alternate for fifty-eight thousand?
There, there would be, they, they have to bid that with the understanding that that's a possibility. That's why we broke it out, because we weren't sure what we were going to see as far as cost. So we broke it out a little bit to try to hopefully stay with closer to budget, but it ended up being over. So there's no, there's no impact to that one thirty-five if the additional fifty-eight is not approved.
I'm talking roadwise, using the road.
I'm sorry.
If you don't do both, it, what is the impact? Is it?
Um, I, I think you're, I don't know that there's any immediate impact except extending that road deterioration and kind of, lack of a better term, kicking the can down the road. It will have to be done at some point, but we can stretch it out to additional budget years. But just have to understand that the condition of the road's not going to get any better.
Yeah, that'd affect the cost.
Yeah.
Condition of the road here. That fifty-eight, wait, D sixty-five next year?
They are more. It's oil base and.
Get complaints up to the White House.
But we do the one ninety-four, that leaves the twenty-five thousand in that balance fund?
In Highway Eight, yes. Because we're also paying street lighting electricity out of Highway Eight as well. And that amounts to about forty, uh, forty-five, fifty thousand a year.
Sidewalks come out of Highway Eight? No? Okay.
And when would you be making three hundred? Again?
Yeah. Highway Eight money is usually received in March or April of every year. And that's all dependent based on the amount of tax collected by the state. So the switch to more electric vehicles obviously impacts less, uh, less gas tax.
That's good.
And when would this work be conceded?
Uh, depending on council's approval, they would get their notice to proceed. I would anticipate, uh, we didn't have obviously any kind of kickoff meeting, but they would get started within the next couple of months.
Is that gonna close the road off from there at Maryland? People that need to.
No, they didn't. They'll, they'll work on one side at a time. So they'll, um.
They'll slow them down.
Yeah, I'm just, we will.
That's why we have.
Quite a few for all. Fire members that live down there and I'm concerned that they'll be able to get in. Okay.
Well, I know. I just hope they do one side and any other and they can still.
So if we take this fund balance down to approximately twenty-five thousand for six to eight months, what kind of position does that put us in? What, what could happen or what unforeseen maybe could put us in jeopardy there? Anything?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, we don't really pay anything else out of the Highway Eight fund except for street projects and for the street lighting electricity. So if there would be any kind of emergency funding.
Same, same call.
It would have to come out of the general fund and it would anyway, just because of the approval process required with PennDOT to get projects approved using Highway Eight funds. Um, it's, it's a lengthy process. So, you know, any kind of emergency action would, would be funded using general fund dollars. And, and, yeah, it's a good question. I mean, if it relates to storm water or sewer water, we, it would be paid out of those respective funds.
Don't we still have some more of the funds sitting there? So if it would be an emergency.
Ninety-seven?
Ninety-six, something, yeah, something like that. So we do have that that we could kind of fall back on. Don't want to, but.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we can't use that for street projects, but.
No? It's not what you do, it's how you do it.
Exactly. Um, any other questions? Okay. Um, I think we have a motion in a second. So all in favor of awarding one hundred ninety-four thousand seventy-three dollars and twenty-five cents for the base and alternate bid, uh, please say aye.
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 Pus? My vote is aye. Uh, consider accepting the high bid in the amount of nineteen thousand for the cell of the lift.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pus? My vote is aye. Mr. Solicitor.
I, I really don't have too much to report. Um, after last month's meeting, hearing what happened, went on though, I did take the opportunity to provide a sample of a statement that I've had other municipalities put together to advise people that even though you have the right to speak during public comment, there's certain rules of decorum and that there's a potential risk of being charged with the disruption of a public meeting. Um, I have other municipalities that either put that at the bottom of their agenda or personally work with. Um, the other thing I did was took, uh, provided a sample of a public comment policy that some of my municipalities have adopted so that there is a framework for how public comment is made, taken, provide minutes, uh, provide limitations on time and so on and so forth. That is for your consideration. I just, I put that out there, provided to Andy Schaefer and Bobby today. He can distribu- they can distribute it as they see fit, uh, to the board, the borough councils and the rest of the area.
I think, Andy, can you send that out to all councils so that we can all take a look at it? Make comments and bring it back to the next meeting?
It is not at all intended to curtail or limit public comment. It's intended to put some sort of framework on how it's done and to provide for some limitations. It sounds like what happened last month scared some people. It wasn't, you know, it wasn't.
What, what kind of limitations?
Well, if, if, if you get up and shout out of order or use curse words or things like that, you'd be asked to leave. And if you don't leave, you can be escorted out by a police officer and you could be charged with a first misdemeanor for not, for disrupting public.
So that's how it's executed, Dave, through the police department?
It, it would be, yeah. Or, or we could refer to the district attorney's office. This came up a lot with school districts during COVID because people were very, very upset about either masking, um, shots. It's come up with books, curriculum, a lot of things recently. Um, we've started seeing creeping into the municipal side for whatever reason, um, it's come this way. So again, it's just to put those things out there. It's a talk, again, having a framework. This is not a town hall session. It is not a, it's not a back and forth dialogue. Public comment should have some sort of framework on it. If you're not interested in it, so be it. But at least has some.
Yeah. I, I think an interesting point though is that the law that he's referring to is in place now.
Yes.
You don't have to do anything. It's a state law. You can't, you can't disrupt a meeting.
It's in the crimes code.
It's in the crimes code, yeah. So we, we could actually, and, um, unfortunately, Mr. Taylor's gone, but there is no such thing as everybody gets five minutes and I can give them all to you. Cause that would, that would have basically allowed a filibuster. You know, I, I could have forty people come in here. Everybody says, I'm going to speak for five minutes, but I'm gonna give my time to Andy so Andy can talk for four hours. You know, that, that doesn't work. It's not, that's something that you do.
And it's a shame that one person can run it for everybody else because we did run on, uh, on the idea that we wanted the.
And, and we don't have to change that, Kim. We can still have that. I mean, I don't know if you noticed or not, but I did, I did try to. Yeah. I mean, you, you have to, I think that.
Tell them you're out of order.
Yeah, you're out of order. I mean, some of the comments he was making, and not just talk specifically about him, but some of the comments he was making didn't even have anything to do with the motion. I mean, he started talking about other things and just, so.
I got a question about last month. We stopped the decording when we had our exception, right?
Yes.
You guys all left. The worst attack.
Yeah.
Was during that time.
What, during recess?
Yeah.
During that recess, it was, it was absolutely, you know, there, he should have been arrested on the spot.
Yeah. Rapid fire. But we were all, but again, we were all witnesses. I mean, if we wanted to press charges, we definitely could. I'm, I'm very, it, it's a very sharp sword. You know, when you start pressing charges against citizens for speaking, even whenever they're incorrect in their speech. I mean, I, I just don't, I don't think we want to go down that road.
But yet by the same token, you can't allow one person to dictate or, or give people the idea, this is, this is how you want to behave at, at a borough meeting if you're really ticked off about something.
It's not free for all.
Right? Sometimes there's value, having had a couple of kids that, you know, a good example when they just step out of line a little bit, straighten them out because it's less likely to happen to you or somebody else is less likely to say, hey, you know what? I can do that too.
And I don't recommend you, you go right. I mean, first of all, you should give a warning.
I'm not saying being flip about it, but I'm saying, you know, there's only, there's a certain tolerance level, you know, that.
And where we, where we invoke this at other meetings is, I mean, a gentleman just simply would not yield a floor. He would not, he would die as, he would not do that. We had a municipality where the gentleman came up right to the table and he was not inviting to come up or anything else. So there are circumstances where you might go to that extreme, but generally it's a, you know, please sit down, you're out of order. Please sit down, you're out of order. The next time it gets a little more stirred with your warning. And it's not till then that you, you've given that warning, you maybe take the recess and then you call the police officer. It is not zero to sixty. It is a progressive. And usually in most municipalities and school districts, usually they're very judicious. It's not something they jump right to. But again, it gives the framework and it also gives the public a framework to understand that your right to public comment is not unfettered. It's a, this is a business meeting. This is not a free for all. This is a, a business meeting. We're trying to get work done. Adopted Roberts holds a word, follow them, we're supposed to follow them. Yes, the sunshine law says we do things in public, but the sunshine law doesn't say you can do whatever you want to do when you're in this room. It says you have to follow the group. So that, that's the only reason I provided it, um, to maybe again, put some framework on how we run public comment and to put people on notice that if you get out of line, there is a potential consequence.
And I think, Andy, you did a very nice job of cutting real name in, you know, with the gavel, I think.
Yeah, I'm getting experience that I don't want.
Yeah, I know.
But we, we would put this information out, one of the, we could, so the public could know about it.
Oh, absolutely.
Uh, you, and post it on the website. I mean, that, that's the perfect place to put it, like where people can read it.
Put it on the door.
Yeah.
An abbreviated, you know, but yeah.
Where do things fall with First Amendment rights and that cussing? Say, you know, he starts cussing.
Again.
What's vulgar, what's not? I don't want to get into that again.
It's not based on being vulgar and I, the F-word is one of the most highly litigated word in the First Amendment.
And where is it right now? Because.
Depends on how you use it. So if it, it has to be of reasonable decorum, yes, there are times when someone might curse. But if you continually curse and threaten people, that is a whole different level than I effing.
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
Disaction or whatever the case may be. So all depends on the context.
You're saying that's okay?
It, you can ask the person not to use that language, but that's not a reason to throw them out of the meeting. It's where it's excessive, where it crosses boundaries, where it crosses.
No, maybe we need some more information from you on that along with.
Coming. So, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I didn't know if we included that or not.
It's not gonna get into that detail. It's not gonna get down to weeds. It's, it's really up to the Borough Council President to determine what's an appropriate way the meeting should be run. And that's gavelling people down. It's, it's recognizing people. It's running a meeting like a meeting should be run. So that it runs, there's a certain structure and there's a certain time to be heard, a certain, certain time to listen. And that's really what it comes down to.
Okay. Next, Dave. Andy, just a report.
Uh, in addition to the grant report that you have in your packet, um, just to make sure that was updated for the month. If there's any questions, let me know.
I do have one for that. So 2023, there's, um, a significant, significant amount of money that's awarded.
Yes.
Means that, that's 2023, when typically, does, depending on when you apply for that, does that usually be in the next year or is that always?
Yeah, absolutely. So that, that large increase in 2023 and awarded relates to the, the one point one million dollars that was awarded for the treatment plant. So, you know, we're still early on, not early on, but getting ready for construction. So we'll start pulling that money in, uh, end of 2024, possibly into '25. So you'll see then, that's when that money will show us funding.
Okay. So, so it's not unreasonable to be, the, the green would stay green for two to three years depending on the product?
Well, it was awarded in that year, the funding, the, the blue in this case would extend over multiple of when we're actually utilizing those funds.
Okay. Would you then put it on 2024 or whatever year it is?
Twenty-four, twenty-five. Okay.
That's nice to see.
Yeah, that's, I mean, thank you for all the work that everybody's done, cause that's a significant amount for, for just that one year. Really the last two years, last two full years. So that's, that's a huge savings to not only New Freedom, but New Freedom and Shrewsbury Borough with the, in terms of the wastewater and proportionate share.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Uh, just two other items. At last month's meeting, we had a brief discussion regarding Franklin Street as it relates to the handicap parking space and looking at angled parking along Franklin Street. I did just a quick exercise on the first block of Franklin Street off Constitution Avenue and, uh, looked at angled parking with the amount of setbacks that you'd have to apply off the intersections as well as, uh, all the intersections and any kind of driveway or anything. It just, it, you end up with actually less parking spaces. Plus you're looking at then pushing trucks, any kind of delivery trucks on for Vortex or Seven um, or any of the, the new Berken team buildings onto roads that aren't truck routes. So it just doesn't work in that scenario, uh, especially with the setbacks off the intersections that need to increase because of angled parking. So.
Plus you lose the whole other side of the street for parking.
Yeah, cause we were talking about one way, all right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that, you know, it's good thought. It just doesn't work out, um, on paper. Uh, the other item, as we just talked about, we did have a sewer user meeting held on May thirtieth here at the Borough Office with representatives from Shrewsbury Borough, Shrewsbury Township, Railbird Borough. And, uh, we discussed the current status of the Phase One Aeration Improvements of the Treatment Plant and the fact that those are permitted and we're working with Railbird Borough now as far as the construction permit and any land development requirements that they might have. The next steps basically come down to Hopewell and Shrewsbury Township meeting with Shrewsbury Borough Sewer Authority, discussing their future plans, their future EU requests, as well as working with the current users to come up, redline the current agreement and come up with a new agreement that everybody can be on the same page and everything's clearly defined. I believe this was attempted in the past, uh, maybe many times. However, I think, uh, that we have a, a strong group working together and, uh, hopefully a strong possibility of getting that to actually occur. So we're going to, going to continue to meet and, uh, outside of that, as I said, Hopewell and Shrewsbury Township are going to work with the authority to understand what future needs they have.
Why would they meet with, the township meet with the borough?
The authority, the borough authority.
And, but we would not be inclusive in that.
Well, because the Shrewsbury Township and Hopewell Township, their flow will go into the authority's collection system, not New Freedom Borough.
So. Otherwise they're.
While New Freedom Borough maintains ownership of the treatment plant, what occurs in the collection system outside of New Freedom boundaries is not too much concern. Yeah, it's really up to the authority to convey that flow to New Freedom Borough and the connections need to be administered by the authority and not New Freedom Borough.
When does that meeting take place?
Uh, May thirtieth.
May thirtieth. And in prior, uh, council meeting several months ago, uh, council gave direction to notify me of the next sewer meeting and I've asked multiple times before that. I saw some emails go around and then I was excluded out of the email. So I want that noted and also any sewer meeting going forward. I again, after multiple times of asking, asked again to be notified prior to the meeting, the time and location.
You can't have a quorum presence. I don't, I don't know who's there, but you can't have a quorum for a council president to meet.
The three people on, on the sewer committee are myself, Dennis Sarpa and Bernal.
Unless you advertise it. You can advertise it if you'd like.
Well, it's, it's listed as a committee and we all show up to police commission meetings.
If, yeah, I get it said, if they're advertised, that's fine.
Are they?
They're not.
They're not?
They're working groups. I mean, even trying to get everybody together, I mean, I think we rescheduled it like six times. Probably about six times before we actually got a meeting where everybody could attend.
It's, it's not listed as a working group. It's not a working group. It's a public meeting and I'm requesting to be notified of the sewer authority meetings.
It's not a sewer authority meeting.
A sewer meeting. I'm, I'm requesting to be notified of the sewer meetings with our surrounding municipalities.
Be nice for all the council members.
Again, they, that, yeah, all council could be notified, but again, we can't have a quorum present at the meeting. a quorum present at the meeting.
Unless it's advertised.
Well, I guess you need to advertise the meeting, that I'm asking to be notified of the meeting. This is one of our largest assets, one of our largest expenses, and as a council member, I want to learn more. And again, I'm asking, and I shouldn't have to ask this many times, to be notified of the meeting.
So, are you saying you want it advertised?
Then if it needs to be advertised, it needs to be advertised.
Who's going to pay for the advertisement? New Freedom or Shrewsbury?
Split.
Or Hopewell? Or Shrewsbury Township?
Split, twenty-five months of.
I guess that costs will go proportionate here at that point.
But they all have. And minutes are published in Shrewsbury, why aren't they published in New Freedom?
Minutes for what?
About the, the meeting. They talked about the meeting, their council members get minutes about what was talked about the meeting, and we never get anything in New Freedom.
Well, why didn't they send them to us?
I don't know. I'm, I've been closed out of the meeting, so I don't know.
No, I, I wish, well, Shrewsbury sent them to us, if, you know, if they were at the meeting, we were at the meeting, they're taking minutes, and they're producing minutes, send them to New Freedom. Why are we excluded?
Oh, you can ask nicely, they don't have to, I guess.
Well, yeah, I guess apparently that.
I find out more by attending Shrewsbury Borough meetings than I do attending my own meetings.
There's, there's no decision-making that would take place even if a quorum is there.
It's deliberation, which is, and if you're talking about a decision that could be made, it's absolutely a public meeting. But you don't have to make a decision, you only have to deliberate, and if there's a quorum present, they can discuss and deliberate a meeting, which causes a, a, a decision which causes it to be a public meeting. Again, it's not a problem.
Then it has to be the police commission meeting.
It's advertised.
It's advertised.
If it's advertised.
Well, if it's advertised, advertised, then I suppose.
Yeah, if it's advertised, you're fine. You can have as many or as few people there as you want. It's just whether or not it's, if it's not advertised, you should not have a quorum present, particularly if you're discussing potential decisions.
My goodness. Okay. Then I guess it'll be advertised.
Problem with that is, what if they call and you say, oh, we got to cancel this week, so and so can't make it, we'll have to make it next week?
As long as you have twenty-four hours, there is something, it's advertised. You have, it's asked to be advertised at least twenty-four hours in advance for a special meeting.
We could advertise it four or five times before we have a meeting.
That's true.
Well, we'll give it a shot.
I'm just, I'm just putting that out there, trying to find.
No, you're right, you're right.
What if you promise to keep your mouth shut and you go?
Well, with all due respect, I don't trust anybody to do that, so.
For informational purposes only.
Are you attending?
I, I never know when they are. I, I'd like to know when they are also. Now, as mayor, I didn't.
You were on the, on the list. President's report, I have nothing. Mr. Mayor?
Um, I can wait for EMS. I will say, Denny and I got a lot of good information, we thoroughly enjoyed spending time at the, uh, PS, uh, PSAB convention last week in Hershey. Thank you for taking care of those reservations, Andrew. Uh, I would, uh, I would recommend any of you to take advantage of that. The seminars are, are, are good, um, they're professional, and honestly, I don't know how they do it for the, for the cost. I think it's, it's two hundred and fifty dollars for registration. Heck, Denny and I ate more than that, let alone all the, uh, all, all, everything that we learned in all the seminars. It's, it's a wonderful experience, please, next year, take advantage of it if you possibly can, even if you go for one day. Um, they have a lot of vendors. Um, I think it'd be good maybe for, for our Public Works to maybe be able to go the one day with you, Andrew, for the, the vendors. I know you went last year, and we got kind of things, was it last year or two years ago? A little confused, because they have Sunday, Monday, and tear down Tuesday, and you were tied up and went Tuesday, and they were really starting to tear down. But there's a lot of good information, almost everybody, there's co-stars. So, we, we thoroughly enjoyed that. I'll get to some more during the EMS flyer. And thus, do you have anything to say about the meeting, Danny?
We found out that we're not the only borough that has common problems, sometimes like EMS and fire are.
Oh, yeah.
Over the whole state, well, attacked it and.
Yeah, the Fire Commissioner was there, and that was probably the high, most highly attended seminar there because of the problems everybody is currently having, and, uh, we had some legislators there, we had, um, DCED was there, PennDOT, of course, they got food again, but, uh, it's, it's great information. Thank you for allowing us to get, give us the opportunity.
And more people are aware of it, this is the record number of people, this, this being a twenty-three-year old record.
Yeah, yeah, they had low attendance.
Four hundred and twenty-five people.
And it was amazing, the, the, the young people, I was so surprised. The other years I went, it was more older people, it was a great mix of people my age and people Ryan's age, you know, and younger, that are really taking a, an interest, a serious interest.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Southern Regional Police Department, um, the, uh, meeting started out with, uh, honoring Officer William Hornberger. Uh, he was given a certificate of appreciation by the chief. Uh, he start, actually started in Glen Rock and joined SRPD at SRPD's inception. Uh, he has twenty-two years of service, and he's not done serving, he's, he's going to be in the, uh, he's going to Harrisburg for park service, so he's going to be doing that now, so. They are going to have a, um, dinner or something for him sometime in the future, and everyone will be notified of that. Um, New Freedom Borough hours are up, um, chief thinks they'll be manageable, uh, it's mostly a result of multiple car thefts on two days. Uh, these were accompanied by multiple car break-ins, so not just the cars were taken, but the other cars were broken into, and most of the ones broken into weren't locked, so it's kind of not really broken into if you leave your door unlocked. So, make sure you keep your cars locked.
That wasn't to just one area either, was it? It was all over the.
No, it's actually Anarodno County, um, Carroll County, it's, it's, they, they really, they really hit a lot of different places. This is a ring, and, uh, anyway, let me just finish up. Um, it's, it was a joint effort between Pennsylvania State Police, Sheriff's Department, York Regional. They initially caught two nineteen-year-olds, a firearm was recovered, all of the vehicles taken from New Freedom were recovered. They stole a credit card and they used it, it really should be criminal school somewhere, but they used the credit card at the ROFO in Hereford, and they were all on film, getting food and having a good time, and so the stolen credit card was used there, and that was one of the ways they were able to crack it. Um, New Freedom Borough commended SRPD, and the chief were, uh, clearing the crime in such a timely manner, noting that a rapid resolution of major crimes sends a message to potential perpetrators and acts as a major crime deterrent. So, uh, it's not Mayberry, we've got a good police department here. Um, chief's replacement car, uh, is on the road, the old car is, uh, up for sale, the insurance pension carrier is still undecided, and there will be another meeting with PMRS, which is the current carrier, in the near future, that will be announced. Uh, the IGA has been sent to all members, it's been approved by all member municipalities, and the July third SRPD meeting will be at Shrewsbury Borough due to the New Freedom Borough Carnival.
Uh, question about the, um, break-ins. How does that work with them being sent back to Pennsylvania for, you know, charges to be filed? They just, they get sent up here, or do they have?
Oh, yeah, yeah, they'll bring them back. And Pennsylvania State Police are, um, spearheading a large part of the investigation now.
All right, that was my, that was my next question. How does it work between Southern Regional Police, State Police are spearheading?
Well, shots were fired, so they had to take over parts of the investigation, so I mean, we're still participating, but, but pretty much they rounded up the whole gang, which is really good. That's all I had on that. Yes? Oh, sorry.
Uh, it'd be great in the investigation of all this, um, why did they pick us? I mean, it's very specific, right? Fifty-eight percent crime increase in that area, and, and they went to New Freedom, these guys are in Anarodno County, how do they even know it exists? So, how, how did that?
I have a thought. I'll, I'll give you my thought. We now have a hundred and forty-four homes in Franklin Square, which is a wonderful thing, I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but a lot of the people in Franklin Square have moved up from Baltimore, and their friends come up from Baltimore, and they, you know, they look at our sleepy little town and they say, hey, guess what? All these people have really late-model cars, you could get a whole bunch of them real quick up there.
Yeah.
And then when they came back the second time, they got boxed into Franklin Square, so Franklin Square was also their downfall because they blocked each end of the road, and that's how they, they caught, caught them, made them get out of the car, and they caught the two nineteen-year-olds. So, but I, that's my thought, is that, you know, uh, there's enough traffic up here, and we've got people on the rail trail, I mean, coming up from all different, uh, different areas, you've got people on the train coming up from all different, so we're not isolated anymore, we're, we're very much exposed to public.
At a proximity to eighty-three, they can do something here.
Oh, yeah.
They're up and down eighty-three.
Yeah, you're only four minutes to Maryland Line.
I can get that, because Shrewsbury didn't seem to be nearly hit like we were, so it's meaningful, I heard it all happen, that was, I mean, you know, we were pining for a reason, you know, something happened here, and now that I think about it, I got cut off from somebody that had to have been a resident in Franklin, and, um, yeah, it makes sense enough.
Yeah, and then Shrewsbury will go through, uh, they'll hit CVS, they'll hit some of the other stores.
They could have just run it, yeah.
Walmart all the time, you know, they just walk right out with the, the shopping cart full of groceries.
CVS, yeah. Okay, engineers' report, monthly progress report.
Are you talking about Warehouse or Farrell?
I'm sorry. Uh, okay, matters.
They're first.
Warehouse is first.
Okay, so I, I have a question, um, uh, two D St. John the Baptist Church, nowhere completed, received, revised submission, uh, six through twenty, twenty twenty-four. Do you know what the next, what the next actions would occur in terms of review would come, because I may get asked on something, so.
Uh, yeah, I know, uh, Warehouse Engineer Dan reached out to, uh, the church's engineer and Crossroads, and they're working on trying to get meetings together. They went back and forth on a couple items as far as stormwater, and they're going to try to sit down and have a discussion on how to work that to move forward. So, at this point, it's just in review. Uh, we probably will send a request for a time extension waiver just because of making sure it falls within line of meeting schedules.
Okay, so I, then, if it's possible, and I'll ask the church if they want me to go, I'd like just to attend the meeting, because I talked to, uh, the church about, they had a question about, well, what's going on, and what do we have to do, and I went through as best I could and explained everything, and the problem seems to be, at least what I got, the problem seems to be their retention facility down there, and they had to discharge a warrant from that, and, so I, 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 I think they understood, I think Randy understood, and I hope he understood, but, uh, I, I guess what I'll do, uh, when I see him on Sunday, I'll just ask him if it's okay when the church, this engineer has a meeting with, with Warehouse, if, if I can attend, just to keep up on what, what's going on, in case they ask me down the road, I don't have to try to catch up, so.
Okay.
Could, could I ask a question on the, what, what is actually happening with our solar farm? Is that, is that, do they stand still, I mean, or?
There has been, uh, no communication, they picked up and paid for their building permit, and that's pretty much where it stands at this point. So, I don't know if they're going through their approval processes, uh, and that's what's dragging out. I'm not sure.
I was just curious, I didn't see any, there's, nothing seemed to be happening, you know, I mean, the.
Maybe they're waiting for the check from Biden or something.
What's the sidewalk project?
Main Street Sidewalk Project.
Oh, that's the, uh, extending the reach of the crosswalk there on Main Street.
The one I keep asking about, okay.
Yeah. Uh, Warehouse, I believe, has a meeting scheduled with the PUC later this week out on the site, just to address any of their comments, because the PUC regulates that crossing.
There was, we had an accident there, lady, older lady fell in, uh, stones, chuffing across, and she caught her toe, and that's what I said, I, I think.
Unfortunately, we have to deal with PennDOT and the PUC on that area.
Yeah, tell me.
Orwick Road pumps, uh, station, is that related to any emergency work from a few months ago?
Yeah, that was the emergency work, and then we're working with Warehouse to, uh, design stormwater improvements so that that stormwater coming down off Orwick Road is not basically going into the pump station, like it was before, not going into the building, but laying around, uh, the manhoofs in that area, basically, or causing the depressions.
Archbent Phil feasibility and master plan, I see that there's a date to be determined for the advisory group, who's in the advisory group for that?
Those same people that have been in it from the beginning.
Well, that is, thanks. Can you just, can you, that, you know, when and where is that meeting is?
Yeah, at this point, they're just, uh, finishing up the feasibility and then moving into the master site plan, so I think there would only be, of that group, I think there would only be possibly one more meeting.
If you can, I wouldn't mind sitting in with them.
Yes.
Anything else on Warehouse? Uh, while you're looking at that, I, I have to backtrack for a second, I, I forgot one item. Um, Dave and I, uh, talked after the last, uh, police commission meeting, and we are going to, uh, switch our roles, uh, won't really impact anything, but I'll be the, uh, on the police commission, and Dave will be, uh, our alternate. Okay, water system?
I, I had a question for, uh, for Danny. Uh, can you put those, um, data loggers out for water leaks? Did you find any significant water leaks in the water system itself?
We haven't so far.
That's good.
And some services and stuff.
And some services and stuff that popped up, but doesn't, doesn't make any danger.
The new development, we're not gonna have any situations there with water problems, right? We're adequate to supply those new ones. And is the part of that that's gonna supposedly go over into Shrewsbury Township? Will they hook into our water, or will they have to hook into Shrewsbury? No, actually hook into York Water? York Water, okay.
Yeah, uh, there's no proposed.
Just wait. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have, wouldn't have a problem with supply.
Police water system?
Do, maybe, maybe Andrew doesn't know, because it's just sewer leak, but, um, it's a plant set staff assistant maintenance department inspection of a thousand feet of storm sewer using sewer bin camera. What, you know what thousand? Where the thousand feet were, Danny? Was, was it a particular street?
I'm not, I'm not sure where they were, where they were actually, you know, the sewer department? What they were doing?
Is that storm sewer using sewer?
Oh, sewer sewer. Well, we were doing, what did you have it doing, Jake?
Uh, huff hinds. Working on the huff hinds and livery, uh, area, pipes up there compromised. We're looking to see what we need to do to get those, uh, evaluated again first.
Okay, so there, there is something there that, that's gonna need some kind of activity or?
Yes.
Yeah, a lot of that, the bottoms out, and a lot of that, it's all down the rest.
Get corrugated, yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else? And zoning and code enforcement. First is the permit reports.
You have a question? Uh, down there under date five fifteen, uh, two thirty-one North Third Street. Replace stone patio with concrete. Why would, if you're replacing one with the other, why would there be a, a fee and require a permit?
Stone is usually considered, um, pervious.
Well, stone, impervious. Not if it's not compact and.
If stone, if stone used for parking is considered impervious.
Right, that's impervious. But if you have, like, the squares, is that pervy, impervious or pervious?
If they're pavers.
Right.
Then, then it's pervy. Uh, uh.
Impervious?
Impervious, sorry.
It is, okay. But once you, once you put concrete in, then it's?
Impervious.
Impervious, okay. And that's why they had to get the permit, correct?
Oh, and, and this one, they might have been expanding the area. I, I don't know the exact details of all of that.
Okay. I was just, that, that hit me. We'll have a discussion. I have some pictures for you. People like to take advantage of the weekend.
Code enforcement report?
Just one, twelve thirteen, um, they mow the day before the meeting every month now.
Sorry, say that again?
Twelve thirteen.
Pull your, pull your mic down, Dave.
One on one stuff, what's that?
House next door to me. There, I mean, they mow once a month, and I know that people tell them to do it, but they all, I can guarantee you, every single time we have a meeting, it's mowed that day or the day before.
When regards to North Second Street and the principal uses, that's referring to the camper that's being used on the property?
Correct.
And I see it leaves off May thirty-first, that another quality of life issue was, was given. The, the next two are, I guess, expired in April twentieth. Have those, any movement? Have they been resolved or in the motion or anything?
Uh, they, they have not, uh, as far as the principal uses, they have not. As far as the vehicles, we're taking a look at that, as far as the pictures that were taken, uh, to document the May thirty-first condition, to make, to compare to see which ones have been removed, if any. So, that's still in process.
Will we, will we file a lien then for the default judgment?
That's up to the district magistrate to collect.
Oh, they do collect that? So, they have to make a payment every so often?
That's up, yeah.
Okay. And then they're.
How is the principal uses resolved?
It's a tough one, because we actually have to have a way to prove, other than just picture documentation, that they're being, that that is being occupied. Um, so, uh, we need to.
She announced it at Bonkey's with her children in front of twenty-five people.
I'm, I'm sorry, where is she? She's back on, on, uh, two thirty, uh, the first one?
First one.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I know you had mentioned that before, but, I mean, that's, that's, yeah. No, I'm not sure that, uh, Judge Sweeney would even find that admissible in court.
Do, do you stand out on North Second and take pictures of the car parked in front of it and entering and going, and the cables going in, giving it power?
People keep, people keep campers plugged in to keep the refrigerator running, um, batteries charged. That, I mean, that alone, though, I would think would be hard.
If you're concerned about that, you might wanna look at Shrewsbury's. Shrewsbury had a problem with, uh, RVs.
With all these violations filed enough, or taught them, there can be no, um, enforcement of code violation, or any of this being, it's not just a one-off. I mean, this picks up half the page, these violations, and it's been a judgment.
And I was treading lightly on that one, uh, because of the magistrate, because we were waiting for the outcome for that. So, now that we have the judgment, we can proceed with other violations.
So, you'll be proceeding now that you have the judgment?
As long as that we can, as long as we can somehow prove that, yeah, they're going in and out and, and provide additional pictures, yes.
Have they paid any of their quality of life, um?
Yes, they paid the first.
A hundred, five hundred, they paid those?
They paid the first and the second. They have not.
Paid the thousand.
Which is why the default judgment, well, which is why we filed at the magistrate and why we rewarded the fault judgment.
And I'm sorry, what was the, what's the most under quality of life after?
Five hundred dollars.
Five hundred. That's after so many?
Fourth.
Okay.
And, and any subsplit.
So, the default judgment was basically for two violations?
Correct, 'cause we took the last three and asked for a maximum five hundred dol, the maximum of five hundred dollars for each.
Geez, I didn't think that their office was, took care of collection.
This really needs to be addressed, because just extrapolate this out for New Freedom. What New Freedom would look like if this continues, and just extrapolate that out for a moment.
You know, you do what you can do, though.
What?
We've sent them, uh, letters, uh, from twenty twenty-three, right? And they just, they pay that one, start cleaning up a little bit, they?
Evaluating it, the dumpster is full, it is being emptied. I, I watched it being emptied multiple mornings. Um, there's a trailer full, ready to go, it just needs to leave the property. So, it's, progress, yes. Uh, sufficient progress, I would say probably, well, no.
Yeah, I've said it before, I'll say it again, these, these quality of life laws are made for people who are willing to follow them. They're not made, I mean, you know, they could pay, I mean, five hundred dollar, a thousand dollar, you know, I mean, until you make it something like, that actually hurts their pocketbook, it's not really going to, we're probably at the maximum, right?
For quality of life tickets, yeah. I mean, you go into a civil complaint, and that's completely different.
But if, but if they don't pay, your alternative is, what, put a lien on the property and just wait, then?
Well, if, if they don't pay the quality of life ticket, that's, that's why we filed at the magistrate as a civil complaint. At that point, it's up to, the magistrate basically is going to be the one collecting those funds, no different than a speeding ticket.
But we do have laws, ordinances, and codes to follow, and that's why they're there to be followed. The enforcement needs to follow.
Well, we, we are.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, the law protects a lot of times in these instances. It's like, you know, okay, as long as you pay twenty dollars, you know, it starts all over again with certain instances.
Anything else on code enforcement?
Boy.
Uh, the first, um, recreation, uh, meeting for SYC Recreation will be tomorrow at six o'clock. I mean, it's at Shrewsbury.
Shrewsbury.
Shrewsbury Township, sorry. Okay, subdivision and land development activity report? Sorry, jumped.
Was that the planning commission meeting that was canceled and then re, there was one that was canceled?
No, this is, this is the first one.
Or was that zoning area? Something was canceled. I got, um, that was on Savvy Citizen, that one was canceled. I guess not, okay.
Yeah, not planned, at this point, is waiting. Shrewsbury Township approval by their planning commission before it, before it moves forward on our end.
For the thirty-seven, yeah.
For, I'm sorry, for what?
For New Haven.
For New Haven, the thirty-seven homes on Kirchner?
Okay, why do they need anything from Shrewsbury Township?
Part of developments in Shrewsbury Township was, it relates to the road and the stormwater.
Okay, so these thirty-seven lots are?
It's thirty-seven lots, but it's thirty-four single-family.
But just in New Freedom Borough, or is this?
Thirty-seven lot, uh, development.
In both?
That includes portion of those lots in Shrewsbury Township.
Okay, I thought originally those were just in our borough, and they were.
The thirty-four houses.
Thirty-four, okay.
The stormwater retention is gonna be on this Shrewsbury side, so they need the land development plan that includes the Shrewsbury, Shrewsbury Borough.
Oh, town, okay, yeah, 'cause that's.
Township, Shrewsbury Township.
Well, okay, through three different areas, the borough, two boroughs and the township.
Okay, um, EMS and fire?
EMS has sent out their, um, speaking of EMS and fire, there goes a siren. Let's see what that is. Oh, candle red, seven thirteen candle, seizures. Um, that, um, they're, they're putting out their membership drive right now for EMS. I encourage everybody, you should have gotten that in the mail. Uh, please support them. Um, that does get you, uh, if your insurance won't pay for all of it, that gets you a discount on the remaining amount, uh, that they will, that they will collect. Uh, I think it gives you a thirty percent discount on the balance. Uh, but, but please, um, I just got a, asked for a, an update, and I'll read you what, Abby, who's the supervisor for EMS, uh, the, I asked her how the chase truck was coming, the chase truck should be done. It's getting wired and lettered in the next two weeks. I am hoping to have it in service by the middle of July, and that depends on when I can get the federation to certify it. So, we got government involved and coming in to certify the chase truck. Uh, once that takes place, it'll be in station. Uh, they do have, uh, staff, which is great, uh, with, uh, one open EMT spot. So, if you know anybody that's, uh, an EMT looking for a job, spread the word. Um, we are gonna utilize, uh, part-timers, uh, so that we can get up and running right away, once that certification comes through. So, uh, good news, good news, and that, uh, is gonna be great for all members of, uh, of our borough, Shrewsbury Borough, Shrewsbury Township. So, they, they're very grateful for everything that we've done in the past, uh, six months and, and year.
Um, I wanna mention, too, the, uh, October nineteenth, from four to eleven, at the community center, is the Rose Fire Bull and Oyster Roast.
Forgot that.
It's a catch. Thanks.
And the following week is the bingo.
Yeah, and then, yeah, it's the following weekend, right, the following weekend is the bingo. So, uh, the Bull and Oyster Roast will be a nice event, so. I think, is, is that a BYOB thing?
It says more details to follow.
Yeah, yeah. So, you can fi, you can follow it on Rose, uh, their Facebook page. Health and safety, cover infrastructure, um. Said, uh, rental housing and occupancy ordinance will be next.
Yeah, I'm gonna need some help from somebody on that. We went over it, we have everything down, we need to revine it, I'm just having some, some issues.
Okay. Um, correspondence, we have a, um, item from, uh, York County Boroughs Association. It's, uh, June twenty-seventh picnic in the park. Um, it's nineteen dollars, and it's, um, where? And it's, um, where, Lake Redden, Blue Gill Pavilion. Anyone's interested, um, get a, um, registration, well, it's in your packet, uh, to get, uh, get it to hand.
Do you prefer to just do one, everybody contact you and you do one?
If you'd like to attend, just let me know, we'll send one registration in.
It's usually a nice event, I, you guys went last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a nice event outside under the pavilion.
I think it went two years ago. The other one I went to was in Stuartstown.
Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Unfortunately, I have one due to Mrs. Boyle's comments earlier. I'd like to correct it, that my birthday is in late December, so there was nothing being celebrated at the V F W in the office. And then I know she's been contacted by the prior canteen manager and told what happened there. And if you and I were seen behind the bar, it's because they were shorthanded, we were bussing tables, taking very dishes to the kitchen. Hope that ends all of that.
Yeah, I don't know how this turns into a V F W, but, all right. Thank you, small town, I guess. I will entertain a motion.
Oh, is that good?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
My vote is aye. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, goodbye.
Bye-bye.